The meeting has already been called to order. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Milonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Lenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like Mr. -- the Director Hashem to lead us in this. Thank you. Please be seated. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve order of business January 23rd, 2018, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, and next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for regular meeting of January 9th, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the January 9th, 2018 meeting attached as for A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is public hearings and comments on agenda items only. I ask that you please state your name, where you live, and the agenda item, and please limit it to three minutes.
Two.
Anybody?
Yes.
Two minutes.
I'm sorry, two minutes.
I want to speak in regards to 11A, the ordinance in regards to the medical marijuana facilities. I would ask that all of you that, you know, when you enter our city, it says the city with the future. And if you vote to bring this illegal drug into our city, how can we be a city with a future? If you're looking at it from a money standpoint, money is not going to pay for all the trouble that that gives us. There is no way that that money is going to compensate for the amount of police and the amount of accidents and the lives that are going to potentially be lost from this. Stone drivers, drugs leading to other drugs. So what I ask you is that, when you look at this agenda item, is that you look in your heart and you think about, how do you tell your children not to do drugs, or your grandchildren not to do drugs? And how would you look them in the face and tell them, yes, I'm the one that brought these drugs into our city? I let the drugs be sold here, procured here, transported through here. How can we have a drug-free city, or try to do our best at that, if we can't keep these facilities out of our city? I think it would be a detriment to us. There's no amount of money that is going to pay for all the drugs that are going to come into our city. It's bad enough that we let people grow in their own houses and create the smell and the mold and the issues that, and trying to even sell those houses. If you vote yes and approve an ordinance bringing this into our city, you're going to lower our property values. Nobody wants to buy a house, $100,000 house, when there's a pot facility on the corner. Nobody's going to want to work here in this, in a city that promotes drugs or drug use. How are we going to find qualified employees out of a city that has drugs that readily sell them here? I would just ask you that there are plenty of other facilities in other cities. Let them take the risk. This is a social experiment that will fail, just like Big Tobacco did, Big Marijuana will. If you listen to the people who are trying to get these facilities into our city, they don't have, they all, their vested interest is this: money. They want to turn a buck off our city and our people. Don't let them do that. They have no vested interest. They don't live here, no matter what they tell you. And so they don't have the vested interest. This is where we live, where we work, where we play, where we stay. And I would ask you not to approve any, any of the five medical marijuana licenses for our city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. What else?
If we can have the people identify themselves.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that. That's my bad.
For the record, though.
Yes, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah. Deborah Brown England, I live on Silver Lane.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next.
Hi, good evening. Shiler Engel of Shiler Engel PLC, an attorney in Shelby Township. I appear on behalf of Michigan Alternative Relief. I've met with many of the council members, some of the new faces though, so congratulations. It's well deserved. But the MMFLA isn't about bringing marijuana to the city. All of updated drug policy is on the issue of diversion. Marijuana is going to exist, it's not going to go away. We already have this in our homes, it's already ruining our property values. The MMFLA represents the state legislature saying, let government take back the distribution of marijuana. Right now, we don't have that system. We have a hobbled-together 2008 Michigan Medical Marijuana Act that allows just simply a caregiver-patient relationship, and there's a lot of issues that are existing because of that, the relationship between a city and the state, and what Michigan Medical Marijuana Act allows. This is a brand-new system. This is an opportunity for the state of Michigan, which has already released emergency rules that only govern the application process, that is impossibly thick, impossibly thought out, and well-thought-out. Every single little bit of regulation that can be applied is there. We have 2018-styled regulation that takes from our more mature western states and imports it directly into Michigan, so we will skip the problems that Colorado, California, and Oregon have. This is not about allowing marijuana to just simply be free, this is about actually controlling it, what we failed to do in 2008. So everything that's going to come out of the MMFLA is going to be the benefit of a city. Why would you want these homes that have a caregiver in the basement with his plants? That, that is not what you want. What you want instead is this to be in a commercial area where we have a streamlined procurement and a system and a supply chain that follows after, where everything is exactly regulated. That's what's up for debate. We have, our state legislature now see, anticipating creation of a state bank to solve all of our banking issues, and we have revenue updates that indicate that all of this is going to be taxed a certain way. So as we have been telling this council for some time, this regulation is advancing, it's advancing steadily, it's going, it's going to be the most regulated and controlled industry that Michigan has, it is the most difficult license to attain in Michigan. This is about clamping down on marijuana abuses, not allowing them to permit, possess any further. So thank you. I know that you guys will be coming to a decision soon, and that this ordinance is in the best interests of not only this community, but the communities that surround it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up to the podium and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Doug Maines. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Honigman, Miller, Schwartz &amp; Co. out of our Lansing office. I, like Shiler, I'm also here tonight on behalf of Michigan Alternative Relief. So I've been in private practice now for about three years. Prior to that, I worked for the Michigan Legislature, where I actually served as Deputy Leo Counsel to Speaker of the House and helped write the legislation that became the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. So for those of you who are new, I just kind of wanted to touch on that briefly. For those of you who have been around, I know this is old hat. So what that legislation does, what the new act does, is it creates a regulatory system for five different types of marijuana facilities: growers, processors, provisioning centers, who are your retailers, secure transporters, and also testing laboratories. And under that, under the act, locals have the authority, it's an opt-in system. You can opt in or you can opt out. You get to decide whether or not these facilities can be in your jurisdiction. And if you opt in, there's several things that you can do. You can decide what facilities you want, whether you want growers, provisioning centers, whether you don't want certain things. You can decide how many you want, whether you want to put a cap on the number of growers or you want to allow an unlimited amount of provisioning centers. All of that's up to you. And the third thing you get to decide is where you want to put them. So what zoning, what sort of spacing requirements, how far away they need to be from schools, churches, parks, and the like. So I've been all around the state and worked on ordinances that opt municipalities in, under the system. And what you have before you here, the ordinance that, that we've worked on with Michigan Alternative Relief to, to provide to you, is an ordinance that I think is, is very simple, it's very compliant with the MMFLA. So you see a lot of places around the state where they'll try to do ordinances, where they create a selection system, criteria, things like that. That, to me, is, is a good way to get yourself suited as a municipality. It goes outside of what you're allowed to do under the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time is up. Anyone else?
Well, I think she was before.
She was next.
She was next, I'm sorry.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. I'm not a lawyer, but I was a nurse at one time before I retired. I am for medical marijuana. I have seen how it has helped patients, especially those suffering from the effects of chemotherapy. So I, I do think medical marijuana has a place in our society. However, Dearborn Heights is not the kind of city that should have any medical marijuana facilities for the simple reason, we are a close residential bedroom community. If I lived in Romulus, Michigan, I would be up, and I would be saying, yes, we can have medical marijuana facilities, especially at Vining and I-94. Perfect spot. No schools, no schools, no houses, no places of worship. Children would not be exposed to it on a daily basis walking to and from school. I don't care if it's 1,000 feet away from a school. These kids still walk, at least in my neighborhood, they do. So I am asking the council to vote this down for Dearborn Heights. This is not the community that these facilities belong in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Scott W. Lowry. I am CEO and founder of New Leaf Cannabis Consulting, which is a business licensing management and investor relations agency for the state of Michigan that's roughly about two and a half years old. What my company does is, we do a lot of the administrative heavy lifting for licensure and make sure that our compliance standards are met. We write the operations manuals, create the inventory and record-keeping procedures, go through the software, write the, the business plans, do the pro forma financials, the corporate structuring, security. We handle the security concerns, as well as laboratory testing procedures, a lot, I read a lot, my team and I read a lot of standard operating procedures for nuisance mitigation, security, onsite security, et cetera. My, my background is that I am Chief Operations Officer of a 46,000-square-foot cannabis cultivation facility in Tecumseh, Ontario, of which I'm partners with a law firm there, Current &amp; Macri Law Firm. And I wanted to basically kind of step up and, and offer myself and my, my breadth of knowledge as a resource for all of you in case you had some specification questions as to how these facilities are run, the safety and efficacy, and also, you know, the ability to actually do a real SWAT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, to, to make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
State your name.
Ali Almuna, West Central 21, Current Christie. 19 Gale, Dearborn Heights. I'm a father of three boys, 17 and 16-years-old and 10-years-old. There is no way in the world I would let my boys see those facilities, marijuana, miracle marijuana facilities, in my city when I take them in the morning to the schools. I would not want to see this. I would not allow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Chief Dan Valtoni. Before the council makes a decision on this, you've heard from other individuals interested in supporting medical marijuana and the facilities offered under state law. Nobody has consulted the police department on this issue from the board. We had a study session before where majority of people in support and a couple residents from the city got up, stated they were for, or against it. The number was less than 10, and we decided to postpone giving our opinion on it until the council approached people who protect the city. And in my best interest, I do not like to see that. I would not like to see those facilities in Dearborn Heights. It's not in the interest of the city, or in my belief. So I would like to elaborate on that later, but that's just me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just speak real quick tonight, and I'm speaking as a resident of Dearborn Heights, lifelong resident, as a police chief in this community. You know, I grew up here almost 60 years ago, and our slogan back there was, "The city of a future, the city with a future." I know a lot of our council members grew up in the city, and we've been through the city a long time. I just don't think marijuana coming into our city is encouragement and going to continue to make a good future for us. That's me speaking as a citizen. I've been here all my life, like I said. And as a police chief, naturally, we've dealt with marijuana and drugs our whole career. So I'm against it in that aspect. We've all seen marijuana. And you, and there are studies, there's going to be people here that's going to say, no. But marijuana is a stepping stone to other drugs. And I just think as a council, it's, it's a very big decision. And you know what? We hear a few people that are here tonight in the audience giving their side. We have a lot of residents that, seniors at home, younger people, they're not really aware of all what's going on, and they're the ones that vote everyone into office. And they're sitting at home, and you know, they don't get out and get to the meetings. We have a few that are showing up here. Sure, and it's always the, the few that want something passed that's going to take the greatest interest. So just personally, and then as a police chief in this city, I just hope we consider it and we go in the right direction. I don't think that there's a need for it in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step up to the podium.
I'm Pastor Richard Ostella. I've been South Dearborn Heights since 1984. Church that I pastor is in Livonia. In short, I'd like to plead with you on the board, council, and thank you, council and administration, for allowing me to be here. But I'd like to vote, plead with you to vote no to opening of the door to marijuana facilities, et cetera, because the risks of expansion are not good, even though medical use itself is good. My reasons to vote no are, just got some bullet points here, try to be real quick. No, because these facilities are not needed here. Those in need have sufficient access. I smell plenty of it in my neighborhood. Also, no, tax income to the city will be offset by need for more policing. Three, no, we risk promoting marijuana use among young people by these facilities as virtual signs springing up wherever saying, "It's okay in general," while the risks of general use are many and are loaded with unknowns per the science studies. Hence, it's still federally illegal. So no, because bad example to young people, and it's to the young people who are most susceptible. Four, we should not open a door to medical use that really advances the cause of recreational use and the risks associated with it. By establishing this bias by voting yes, you'd establish that bias, and you're actually voting for something that is illegal by federal law. So wait, postpone, don't say no. 5,000 feet from schools and churches, it's not sufficient. That's what's in your ordinance, I think, for tonight. Better for, six, better for the kind of facilities in view to be located in cities with more open space than Dearborn Heights. We've heard about that earlier. Seven, we should not pass this because the residents have not been sufficiently informed of your agenda and of studies pro and con, let alone implications going forward with too many uncertainties. Eight, I just have nine, so here's number eight. No, because we need a more information-friendly website for this and other issues. I think people, a lot of people have been asking for that. And number nine, no, because no dialogue of the council with residents has gone on to show the whys and the whats of an ordinance that unnecessarily opens a door, a bad example, and that biases the city on the issue of recreational use with the risks that the whole package poses to the health and safety of the people of the city.
Hello, Ash Abus, I live on Charlesworth. I agree with a lot of people here that are opposing this, or, or what they have to say in the beginning. We are the city of the future. Let's continue to be the city of the future. People that are going to be allowing other businesses to flourish and grow, an industry that is already going to be coming, no matter what we say or do, it's going to come in and it's going to be profitable to the city. These facilities aren't going to be just, hey, look, we're opening a candy shop, and let's lure little children or teenagers or people that are opposed to this, or, you know, we're not trying to get faces that don't already want this or have the licensing to do this. They're not trying to hide what they are. They're getting approved by the state. They're going to be regulated by you guys. Why don't we put them in spots where it's zoned correctly? You guys can monitor where they go, allow so many of them in the city, as other cities have already done so. I know a couple of people that are already in the business of doing this, and there hasn't been no increase in crime, no increase in death rates of marijuana, and no increase in illegal activities. Everything has stayed the same, business as usual, except for they are, you know, accepting the money that comes from this and using it towards their city, towards their tax dollars for improving whatever it may be they need in their city. In no way, shape, or form has this affected them in a negative way, no impact. I don't have exact study numbers, nor have I done a huge survey of a study that, you know, will allow this, but I'm pretty sure Fox 2 would have told us if there was a marijuana death due to an overdose or anything like that. But that hasn't happened in any recent years or ever in the future. So basically, I mean, that's what I'm trying to say here is that let's not be the city that says no just because of the fact that we're scared of being the difference-maker, someone that says, hey, you guys, you know, we are taking a stance, we're going to regulate this, we're going to profit from it in the same way that they're looking to profit from it. And it's a growing business. It's going to change all these cities that are allowing it already. It's going to legalize eventually. I mean, we got, what, almost 60% of the people voted for this and wanting it? They're not going to go anywhere. They're going to still vote yes for it. I say, instead of turning our heads to it and just, you know, allowing others, or a biased decision, make this, you know, the, the norm, we should definitely say, let's look at it at all aspects and monitor it opposed to just saying no and just walking away from it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. One, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is bond transfers and current claims. See you tomorrow.
I move council approve current claims 61 through 640 as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have a few questions. We have 616, I believe it was requested by the police department. It's for some tires. And all it is is just tires. So I have no problem buying the tires. But then in 635, we're also purchasing tires that are mounted and balanced. So why are we buying tires with no mounting and balancing? Where are these tires at? Where are these stored? And why do we need to store tires? Tires for these vehicles are properly ready, available within a few hours.
So we, yes, we buy the tires from Goodyear, we get that special discount, and we keep them in stock in the, in the garage. Every now and then, we have to get a tire at tire discount. Sometimes our vehicle maintenance guy might not be working, or we need the tire back in emergency, need it back accessible. The tires in the garage are not always mounted. You know, they're just a tire. So sometimes we'll go up to tire discount, and we'll get them mounted. If you see on some of these bills, you know, it's not, they just don't do all our repair work. Sometimes they do the tire mounting. We get a lot of flat tires, go up there and, you know, they'll do that. So every now and then, we'll get a tire through them. Can I find here exactly what page you're referring to?
I've seen it. I just, that's why I brought 635 up, as you bought tires and had them mounted and high-speed balanced. So you do, so you do take those tires to some, to a...
Tire discount.
Tire discount, to get them mounted and high-speed balanced.
Right. So we buy them from Goodyear, we get just the tire, and then sometimes, when we take it off the police car, then we got to take and put it on the rim. We'll take them up tire discount, they'll high, high-speed balance them, and then they charge us for that.
When Councilman Barry was on the council, he indicated that Goodyear is actually selling these to law enforcement agencies well below wholesale. So he said that even though, if we took it to tire discount, belt tire, that still would be cheaper. So that's how we purchase them.
Even with the charge of mounting and high-speed balancing, they're still cheaper.
The discount is really significant.
It's a big discount when we get, you know, we buy...
But it's below wholesale. Councilman Barry, when he was here, said that they couldn't even come close to buying tires at that rate. But it's only a discount given to law enforcement.
Thank you. One more. 639 is the, from the ordinance department. I remember council approving the equipment that they purchased, but I don't remember us approving them getting all of this work done to these vehicles to install that. This was not part of that proposal at all. Now, all of a sudden, I find another $10,000 being billed, and should have come before council before it was done.
It was approved in my budget hearing. It was presented that I was going to set aside money to have all the tablets and docking stations installed inside the vehicles so they could, it would be more accessible.
I mean, even if it's in your budget, doesn't mean you just go spend the money. Nobody, just, just because it's in the budget, you just don't spend the money. $10,538.8 should have been brought forth to this council to approve, I believe. That's what I believe. It's a lot of money.
Okay. Am I understanding it was already approved when my budget was passed?
I mean, we, we approved the amount of money for the equipment, but to have it installed, I believe, should have come forward to us and said, I believe, should have come forward to us and said, "We need to have these things installed."
The equipment was approved last year, and in this year's budget, we presented at the budget hearing the installation of the tablet and docking stations inside the vehicles.
And you may be correct, Mr. Director, and I apologize if I oversaw that, but I'll check the budget again, and I apologize to you if that's...
It was for, it was for all seven vehicles and then my truck.
Now, does that affect, how does that affect vehicles going back after their...
We, Winder, who does all the police cars, we went to them, it was recommended that we go to them. They install it using one bolt. It's really interesting, you should come see how they did it. Everything is installed on one seat bolt. Enterprise, I presented that to them ahead of time, they said as long as there's no holes. And they said even if there were holes that were required, it wouldn't affect the resale or the trade-in. But there were no holes required at all. It's all mounted on one bolt, that seat bolt.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids from Chief Gavin, Justice Center Fitness Equipment in return of bid bonus.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My motion that we concur with Chief Lee Gavin in his request for bid bonds being held for the Justice Center Fitness Equipment be released back to the unsuccessful bidders is identifying item seven eight.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, eight, we have reports from the mayor. We have appointments to the Watershed Stewart's Commission.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Move to concur with Mayor Dan Pleco's appointments as listed in eight A to Watershed Stewart's Commission.
Support.
Any discussion?
Well, Mo Turvey was at our last meeting, I called by, I don't know if he still wants to serve, he's been regularly coming to all our meetings and all our events, but...
We were notified that he no longer resides in Dearborn Heights, if it's an error, but that's...
I'll check.
That was why we came up with an alternative.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to recognize, just for a second, the accomplishments of, you know, may residents, you know, he's passed on, Stephen Roberts and all the work that he did on behalf of this particular organization, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to recognize him again and thank him.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have from Mayor Pleco, appointment to the Tax, Increment, Finance Authority and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Boards.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. It's the Muscat.
I move council concur with Mayor Dan Pleco in appointment of Councilman Robert Constance to the Piffon Brownfield Board as outlined in eight B.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's got to be a clarification here, it says indefinite. I've never seen an appointment as indefinite, they usually have years tied to it.
Okay.
So I don't know what that means.
Anybody want to answer that?
Well, the last individual I think that was under was Mr. Ken Baron, and we had no date. I certainly have no problem if there is a thought in mind, you know, for a couple of years, that's fine. That was the reason it was left open-ended, but if you felt better, I'm certainly agreeable to a two-year term or a three-year term.
Even four years, just got to have a date on it.
One of the maker in the support included for a four-year term, and we find that very acceptable. Thank you for the amendment.
I move to amend the motion to include the term to expire in four years. That would be 2022.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is...
Madam Chair. Please. I think you need clarification. The motion to amend was approved, now you have to approve the main motion, which is, includes the limitation in terms of the time.
So I, wanted to start over.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
No, no, all you need to do at this point is have a motion, have a vote on the main motion, and then they'll end up having, because they had a...
For the main motion?
Yes. Which was the, you've amended, the main motion was to approve it as an indefinite appointment. Then there was a motion to change it to an appointment for four years. That motion was granted, so now the main motion is a motion for a four-year appointment. Now you need to end up having a vote on that motion.
Okay, let's vote on the main motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have reports from city officials.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is the investment of funds report. I move city council receive note and file the investment of funds report for December 31st, 2017 as submitted in nine A.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Nine B is from Community and Economic Development Director Hashem, CDBGFI 2016 Parkland Park ADA Restroom Project Payment Request Number Two and Number Three.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move council accept and approve the payment request number two in the amount of $12,168 and payment request number three in the amount of $18,759.60 for the year 2016 CDBG Parkland Park ADA Restroom Project as outlined in nine B.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to know, is, do we know if there's any more change orders that are going to be coming on this? Is this going to be kind of put to bed here?
Well, all I can comment is that at this point in the construction, there are no change orders scheduled.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I have nine C from Police Chief Gavin, request to auction vehicles. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Don't say.
I move we concur with Police Chief Gavin and authorize the auctioning of the vehicles as outlined in nine C. Support. Quite a fleet.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's nothing on here that mentions that which auction, or once the vehicles are auctioned, there's a price that, does the council approve the sale of these vehicles?
Chief Gavin, would you like to answer that?
I'll answer that. Mr. Council, Councilman Bazey, so, over the years, we'll have these auctions now and then. These are cars that we tow in from OWI, from accidents, that the owners don't pick up. So the procedure is, we work with Dalton's Towing, and naturally, the cars have been down there for a while, so there's a towing and storage fee. A lot of these cars are not worth too much if the owner doesn't pick it up, so we'll auction them off, maybe get $50, $100. We will turn that money over to Dalton's for the towing and storage. If we get more money than the car is worth, then by law, we have to send so much back to the owner and let them know of it. So a lot of these are just cars that have been sitting in the lot, and we deal with Dalton's Towing, which we've been dealing with for probably the last 30 years, and we auction it off with them, it's a public auction, it's published, and people are aware of it, and then they show up and they make bids on these. But again, most of these, if you look, they're older vehicles, not worth much.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I've got a question for the chief. The chief, is there any cost to the city in holding this auction?
No. Dalton's publishes it, they hold the auction. Like I said, a lot of the money goes back to them for the towing and storage. If there's a title holder on a car and, or a lien holder, and they get X amount of money, you know, over towing and storage, then we send it to the owner.
Thanks.
So there's really no cost to us.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have nine D from the Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2017, 2018 Water Main Replacement Program.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Support.
Go ahead.
I need a motion.
Council. I motion, I motion that we concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer to, here, with the Department of Public Works, has reviewed and concur with Wade Trim's letter dated January 12th, 2018, amend the contract with D and D Water and Sewer for Water Main Replacement scheduled along Warren Avenue, I'm sorry, Warren Road, from Beach Daily Road to Inxter Road, Telegraph Road, from Haas Avenue to Fort Road, Annapolis Avenue, from Monroe to Williams Avenue, and from Merrick, as, and then period, 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 as outlined in item nine D.
Support.
Any discussion? Although, go ahead.
Real quick.
Councilman Muscat?
The, the, um, change order of $1,892 is for, what is that, a million? $892,000?
Yes.
That's a changer, that's just what it was going to cost.
That's amending the contract to new work.
Okay, I thought it was just an addition to more work to be done.
Well, it's the new work for this year.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have nine E from, sorry. Next, we have nine E from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, the Safety Award Program.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move council concur with Director Zimmer to proceed with the annual Safety Award Program, year-end prize program, as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Number 11, we have ordinances and resolutions from, from Councilman, okay, from Councilman Muscat, Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act ordinance.
Okay, I move that we, that this item will be tabled for a future study session. There's a few new council members right now, and we're not aware of, we haven't really researched it, and there's a lot of concerns from the residents, so I propose that we table this for a study session.
Support.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, it's either we refer to a study session or table it. And why wasn't there a cover letter with it asking for a particular action? I mean, you could, just to have the ordinance attached?
Councilman Muscat?
I put this on the agenda for a few different reasons. One, this has been a, since the two years that I've been here, has been a hot topic of this, of a council, city council, maybe not this one with the new people. And regardless of if you're for it or against it, we have many people that want to open up a business in the city of Dearborn Heights. Either this council approves it or disapproves it, so these people can either go to a different city or set up shop here in Dearborn Heights. They need to know what's going on, that's number one. And as I look through our packets on a two-week basis, I always see attorneys going back and forth, charging the city about marijuana ordinance, marijuana this, marijuana that, and it gets to be expensive for the city. So I had this marijuana ordinance to be forwarded to the council here to vote on an ordinance for medical marijuana in the city of Dearborn Heights. As you know, I didn't call any one of you soliciting a vote and politicking for it or against it. It needs to be put to bed, and that's why I brought it forward. So that's my take on this, and if, I'll do what the city council wants to do.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
I've done, I've done a lot of research on this, read a lot of things, met with a few people that were applying for this type of license here in the city, watched a lot of shows, looked up stuff online, I mean, on and on and on and on and on. And I've gone back and forth with this, but I just want to make the statement, at least as it stands today, I have a very serious problem approving this ordinance based on the fact, this ordinance, this particular ordinance right here, was written by somebody that stands to gain from this. This was written by the attorneys for some of the gentlemen that want to open up a medical marijuana facility in the city, and at least on that standpoint, I would not want to approve the ordinance based on something that was written by somebody that stands to gain from this. With that being the case, I'd like to concur with Councilman Bazey, and I think put this to a study session so that even if we did go forward with this, it would be based on conditions in terms that we as a council favor, and of course, our corporate council would ultimately approve. Because there's, I mean, there's some good conditions here, but then there's some things that would be concerning for me. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any other?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just had a few comments. I've spent a lot of time going to meetings and discussions and trainings and et cetera and talking to residents. I think it's very important to hear from our residents on this. So I have opened up that dialogue several times and have received written correspondence as well as phone calls. I think it's really unfortunate that it's been over a year in the making, though. Well, here we are, a full year later, this is still a subject, where the council had a responsibility to vote on this, either yes, no, opt-in, opt-out, do nothing, something besides prolong for businesses who are wanting to set up. And I made a phone call, if I may, to our attorney today and had a discussion, and I do appreciate your objectivity with me today, by the way, thank you. And I'd like to ask you to share why your thoughts are moving it to, a study session was part of our discussion.
Yeah, basically, I believe the matter should be referred to a study session, as Councilman Abdullah had indicated, this particular version of the ordinance had been prepared by attorneys for someone who wants to do this type of business. There are a number of things that should end up being considered, and there's a lot of issues that pertain to this particular matter that new members of the council should, should be made aware of. And another point, I would also recommend that the motion be to refer as opposed to table, because technically, tabling, there shouldn't have been any discussion at this point, so referring it to the study session would be the appropriate motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to concur with what Councilman Abdullah said, and I want to dispel everyone of the idea that we didn't act, that it, so if the city doesn't do anything, the present law is that we do not allow medical marijuana facilities in our jurisdiction, and that's what the majority of the cities, townships, villages in the state of Michigan have done. There's going to be a ballot initiative on this fall for, to allow recreational marijuana. So I want to dispel anyone of the idea that we didn't act. You know, we had several meetings on this, and as I said, and apparently now it's been done, if someone wants to change our ordinances to allow facilities, they're welcome to put that on the agenda.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the only thing I, yeah, the only thing I would ask is, we did have a study session on this, and I had some very great, I had some very serious concerns at the time, because for something as controversial as this, I was very, very concerned at the time, and I felt it was because of a lack of publicity, honestly, where we had multiple people here that were here because they want to open up facilities and what have you, and that's fine, that's, you know, within their rights, no problem there. As a matter of fact, I listened and met with them, and I would like to hear what they have to say, no problem. But the challenge or the problem that I had with this is, at that particular, at those study sessions, we had maybe like two or three residents, and we never had, and I know me and a couple of different council people discussed this, we never had the opportunity to really see and hear and debate even with what the residents had. Why was that the case? There was probably, I don't know, you guys can tell, but off the top of my head, it was like two or three residents, they had nothing to gain or what have you, and this, they just wanted to give their opinion. And there's some of the residents that are pretty active in our communities. As a matter of fact, I remember Suzanne Todd was here at the time, and she gave us her input, which I appreciated. But I'd like to do it in a way where we give it enough exposure, where there's enough residents here, where us as council people can make a much better decision, because at the end of the day, we are not making this decision based on us and what we like. Because I'll tell you for myself, I mean, I started no way with this thing, now it's way to where I was a little bit more open-minded about it. Now I'd like to hear more and more and more about what the residents feel, so please, if we're going to be putting this thing out, let's put it out with enough time where the residents can be exposed and have the opportunity to be able to speak their minds on this. Last time I was put at a time, I mean, for lack of better words, it was a dead day, there was, like I said, two residents here, and I'm totally against that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to add, and I concur with Councilman Abdullah on that, I think it's important to have our residents engage in this conversation. I've heard from several, and I understand the need for the medical marijuana, and it's not just about getting high, that's not even it, it's, there's ointments, there's these different things. I've spoken to veterans who experience PTSD, and they're waiting six to 12 months to get into the VA to get prescribed opioids, which I think is the devil as well. So I think if this is something the council wants to discuss, then let's discuss it openly with our residents and decide how do we move forward if we are going to with this item, and address all of the issues. In particular, my concern is, and I've said this from the very beginning, in all due respect to our officers, police officers, I asked this question about how do we get it out of our neighborhoods? It's already there. Okay, we have people with medical cards that are growing in our neighborhoods, which does cause, there's odors, there's increase in traffic, there's crime, there's houses burning down because the electrical is not up to code, all these things, and that is my concern as well. So, you know, this is the conversation we need to have, we still don't have an answer on, well, how many medical cardholders do we have in the city? You know, things like that, and that's what I want to see addressed.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr., oh.
The, the idea of a study session is absolutely fine. We do publicize our, our open meetings. I don't know how to bring more people in. We've tried that before, trying to bring more people in. Our faithful people that do come in, you mentioned Suzanne Todd, Deb Inge and her husband, they're here, Johar Abdulhak's here, and then that's just... they're here, Johar Abdulhak's here, and then that's just about it. I mean, we got to get more people to come out to let us know how they feel on this. Again, I put this out because it's, it's been a longstanding thing that we've been dealing with. I believe it's costing the city money not doing something, because we're paying attorneys, firing emails and answering telephone calls, and quite naturally, the city gets charged for that. And we need to get off the pot, I guess, one way or another. So I thank you very kindly.
Madam Chair, for, if you don't mind, and one of the ideas for exposure, and I'm going to tell you, and I don't think, I, I'd like to believe it wasn't by design, but when you put out on a Thursday night, it's put out on the website, or plus in the packets that we get, that there is a study session for this on Tuesday, and as you are aware, Thursday night, we get this, and it goes out on the websites hopefully that night or maybe the day after. The city's closed on Friday, closed on Saturday, closed on Sunday. By the time people get around to it, they're not going to be able to know about it. So if we were to, for example, like today, say that in two weeks from now, we will be having, or next week, whatever it is, I mean, you know, announce it publicly and get people to know about this, so that, again, look, if the residents are in favor of this, great. I mean, I think we'd, you know, I'll go for it. If they're against it...
I, I agree, we maybe we can even contact the newspaper, local newspapers, and say, we're going to have a study session on so-and-so date. Once we figure out the date, I think our, our council chair can maybe make a phone call to our local newspaper and tell them to put something in. Very solemnly, we see anything in our local newspaper about Dearborn Heights, so it would be nice to have something in there. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We had not one, but two study sessions on this issue. We had input from our school superintendents, from the police. We had a lot of discussion and our comments at the end. We had several proponents who wanted to open up facilities coming and addressing the council and saying, you know, we need to have this now, everybody has to drive to Ann Arbor, so this is on the agenda now. I don't know what was done to publicize it, but it's, it's an important issue that all the cities face. But procedurally, nothing happens until somebody proposes an ordinance and a, and a change to what Dearborn Heights has now.
And that was the reason why I brought it forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to comment that I would suggest that your discussion be kind of three different points. One, more of a general discussion with respect to whether or not you want this, or are inclined to grant or approve the ordinance. The second one about how this particular ordinance, if it is what you want, can end up being improved. For example, it has no mold control, no odor control, no outdoor storage, no requirements regarding security, it has no delivery control, it has no fire and explosion control, because butane is often an issue with regard to these. The city council would not necessarily be looking at this, there would, so there are a number of different issues. Those issues could be very time-consuming, so if you're not inclined to end up actually wanting to do something like this, you probably save yourself a lot of aggravation and time and legal fees by not going into that discussion. And then a third portion of the discussion could end up actually being on what we can do if there's no change. For example, mold control, odor control, some of these issues could end up also being addressed during that study session.
Aren't those already addressed on the state law?
No. I mean, we, well, not sufficiently. So, I mean, and that's what we, we basically need to end up looking at.
Thank you. Councilman Wunsell?
It was stated that this has been going on for one year, and something that is important to the citizens, we shouldn't set a timeframe on it, we make sure we make the right decision. And these licenses are issued by the state, not by Dearborn Heights, and to apply for a license to the city, that city has to have an ordinance about these facilities. So it's important to people that want to open them up for us to have an ordinance. So I think it's very important that we take our time, make sure we, the ordinance is written correctly by us, and one thing that I was brought to my attention today is even if this, these facilities are allowed in the city and they open up, that doesn't stop people from growing it in their homes. They still have the right to grow it in their houses, so it's not going to stop that at all.
But that's, but that would be with licensing too. Even though they're a caregiver, they're, they're still licensed. And Madam Chair, just one thing I want to add, and this is an example of some of the things that I had a concern, and this is with no disrespect to some of the attorneys that wrote this ordinance. I mean, I appreciate it, it's nice, obviously, but I'm just saying it would be a biased opinion based on the fact that they wrote it for themselves. And one example that came to mind while reading this, and I do understand, and they did email me and saying, you know, we could change or what have you, and I understand it, I totally understand it. But I'm saying, like, one of them, for example, penalties, if there's a problem or a civil infraction, $2,500. When you got an organization making thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars, and then you got a penalty of $2,500, that's pennies. So, but I get it, again, because of the bias being that they're doing it for themselves, they're going to have a lower fee on that. So as an example, thank you.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion on the table right now.
To refer to study session.
So he'd have, yeah, he'd have to adjust his motion to be just a study session only, not to refer. Refer.
amend your motion.
The motion for, yeah, for a future study session.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is communications. It's from Michigan Municipal League, MML, 2018 Convention and 2019 Capitol Conference.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This item is a receive note and file, so I move to receive note and file the correspondence from Michigan Municipal League.
Support.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, do we have any comment from anyone at the table?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hi, yes. I just wanted to thank all of the students from the various Dearborn Heights schools and organizations, including the Hillcrest Qantas K Kids Riverside Middle School Builders Club and Gulf U Manor Teen Action Council, that participated in, we have a youth service program, leadership program we're offering in the city of Dearborn Heights, and they had assembled 100 blessing bags that were for homeless and distributed with Project Unity on Christmas Eve. And they also have been supporting our, one of our local food pantries, which does deliver to homebound, disabled and senior residents in Dearborn Heights as well as Redford. So thank you for all the support. And we just want to announce the next service project for this student leadership program is Saturday, February 3rd, and they will be assisting with the food pantry, 8:30 to 10:00 AM, and then participating in Operation Valentine from 10:00 AM until noon. They'll be making Valentine for active duty military. So you're welcome if you have a teenager in your home, actually even younger, we're having some scout troops join us this time. But if you'd like to participate, give me a call at 313-348-9848. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Little information, for those who plan on sending me a text message or a telephone call, and you don't receive a message back from me, it's not I'm ignoring you, I dropped my phone in a bucket of water today at about 5:30 this evening, so let me apologize now if I don't call you back, but once everything gets straightened out, I'll be returning any call or text message. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have two more announcements, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The city of Dearborn Heights, well, actually, there's a commission we're working on for women and girls, and the purpose will be to work with organizations and social service agencies to advance gender equality, promote public discussions on issues that impact women and girls. There is a information meeting this week on Thursday, January 28th at 7:00 PM at the Carolyn Candy Library, so we would like to invite anyone who is interested in hearing more about this. The idea came from one of our residents, Dana Mohammed, and if you have any questions, please call her, 313-829-2447. I thank the council for their attention to this item, because this will be brought to us hopefully February 13th. And I, I'm sorry, I did have one more, didn't I say I had two, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The last thing I have is, I am sponsoring a student essay contest and scholarships for students of Dearborn Heights, and it will include a full scholarship to the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Convention, which is in the end of March. So this will include their transportation, their lodging, their food, as well as convention fees, and that information is available online, but the question is, is how does a local government impact your life and the decisions we make? How does that affect your life? So the deadline for that is March the 1st. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Councilman Bazey?
Two questions. One, there's a gas station on Van Born, I believe it's an old abandoned station, Clark. I've gotten calls from residents in the area that it's a safety hazard. They said they think, I haven't, I've seen it from the street, but I haven't been close to it. They said that the roof looks like it's going to cave in, so I was wondering if the ordinance department or somebody from the building department's been at that location to see if it's a safety hazard for the residents.
Mr. McIntyre, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you.
Is it Van Born and?
It's east of Telegraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the old Clark Gas Station.
One of our, I think it's listed for sale.
Yeah, it is up for sale. We actually had that facility in court last year because of some blight issues. I'm not aware of anything with the roof, but I'll go check it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, did you? Last night, I had the opportunity as Councilman Bob Constance and Councilman Dave Abdullah joined me yesterday, and we gave, the Crestwood School Board honored an individual, Colleen Crzanek, on her 20th year of service to the board, and I just wanted to indicate to everybody that we had the opportunity to be there and be part of the festivities, and from behalf of all of us, congratulations, Colleen.
It's good. Some of her associates are here. The school board.
Anyone else at the table? At this time, I'm going to ask for any public announcements and events coming up in the city.
Hello, council chair and mayor. I first want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. First off, Monday, February 5th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Candy Library. Join us as we talk about the American Cheese Revolution. Zach Berg, certified cheese professional and member of the American Cheese Society, will guide you through the current renaissance in artisan cheeses and how it represents a revolution. Learn how cheeses are made and classified and everything else you've always wanted to know about cheese. I'm not sure about samples, maybe. Registration appreciated. Call 313-791-3800. Also, Wednesday, February 21st, at Carolyn Candy Library at 7:00 PM, join Mary Spencer as she returns to delight all with more specialty dishes of her Polish heritage. She will prepare mizera, kapustka, and cernik. Hope I got that right. Samples and recipes will be provided for this. Registration is appreciated. 313-791-3800. And that's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you very much.
We have to ensure your Polish.
Anyone else? I'll open up the public comment now.
Good evening, everyone. Johar Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. Mayor, thank you for last night, for everything you've done. In that manner, I would like you to start negotiation with the Board of Education. Maybe you can improve the parking lot for Riverside. I hope you do that. Thank you. I did read this ordinance proposed. There is lots of things, you know, I would comment on, but I think, I, you know, I want to thank you, Ray, for putting it in on the agenda, because really, it's not fair to the people who are lobbying for it or for us as residents to keep this hanging around the city for a year or so without even, you know, discussing it. I think we don't want to put pressure on our police department, because they will be responsible for anything happen, or the EMS people. We need to study this issue as diligent as possible. We need to take our time to be fair to everybody, and I would recommend you don't have to take the burden to make the decision by yourselves. There are lots of people in the city, they don't know anything about this issue, they never heard anything about this issue, and maybe they are very interested in it. I would recommend that we hold at least one or two, a public hearing in place different than this, and we publicize it in the newspaper, on TV, on the city website, on all the activist Facebook pages. This way, we get the largest number, we hear all the sides. And my recommendation to you is to put this in front of the public of the city of Dearborn Heights. They are the taxpayers, they are the beneficiaries, or the losers if anything happen. Let this decision be collective by everybody. This way, I believe we will reach the best decision, which is good for the people who came forward with this issue and for the residents, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Ali Almuna, 60269 Engle. I would love to hear from the city council if there is any plans for the city of Dearborn Heights to fix our roads, especially when it comes to Beach Daily. If there is any plans we have for the city.
First, that's a county road.
But it's being addressed.
There's been a work order called in for that, for, in particular, between Warren Avenue and Ford Road on Beach Daily, which is quite a danger zone.
It is a danger zone. It's very dangerous.
Yes, yes. So that's a county road, and they're addressing it.
Is any schedule, there is any schedule we can see, I mean, we can visually see?
All I know is, we, matter of fact, County Commissioner Webb was here, and, believe me, she's very active in, in trying to get this thing resolved, and, you know, she, it's on the list. Where on the list is she can't tell you, because that, you know, that's the county commissioner himself, okay, the executive, and they got to release the money to fix this. She's, she's been trying to get, you know, trying to get Beach Daily fixed, she's, you know, she, very helpful on getting Ann Arbor Trail done and parts of Warren, I believe, at the time, and she's doing the best that she can. And we, you know, I've sent her emails about the large potholes on Beach Daily just recently. Matter of fact, I was, I hit one here a week or so ago that I thought was going to swallow the whole car, and along them same lines, you know, Cherry Hill's in horrible shape between Inkster and Beach Daily. I mean, it's just, especially the Inkster side of it, is just a total mess, and...
It's a danger zone, Mr.
Well, yeah, it is dangerous, because, you know, car in front of me just weaves out of way real quick, and what do you do, you know? But again, it's a county road, and this council or the city, DPW, really has nothing to do with those roads, unfortunately.
With all respects, Mr. City Council, but I heard that conversation before. I heard that same thing you said, you just said, and never, nothing done.
I, I know, and we keep asking. Collectively, I know I've asked, Rob Constance has, Dave Abdullah, and so has the Lisa Hicks claim, and the mayor. We've all pushed the county to get these fixed. Again, it's just like Ford Road, it, it doesn't belong to the city at all. That's scheduled to be completely retorn up, and I don't believe Ford Road should go ahead of Beach Daily. Ford Road is a dream compared to Beach Daily.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay? And again, it's out of our hands. We can't just go demand that it gets fixed right now, because they're just not going to do it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, I'm almost to the point, because I live off Beach Daily, and I felt about a week ago, there were nine people who stopped either on my block or the block beyond my street with blown tires and bent rims, and I felt real bad. And I felt real bad, there was a woman who had three kids in her van, and when you blow out two rims, no one, she was kind of stuck there. And I am almost at the point of putting up a sign on my property saying, "Contact the County Executive Evans, he needs to fix this road," and now-
Thank you.
And I think that's where we're going to be putting the pressure on because he needs to see that that road is deteriorated to the point, and all our residents, visitors to the city are having these severe problems. And I know Councilman Muscat was the victim of it too also, because these potholes are becoming, someone mentioned a Mini Cooper could fall in.
Right.
This is ridiculous.
Exactly.
And, and your point is well taken, and I think we got to get it right to the County Exec, and he needs to get his act together. Commissioner Webb has done everything that she could in order to get it fixed. I think we got to go higher up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to commend our Director, Bill Zimmer, because on Beach Daily, between Ford and Cherry Hill, I did get a blown, I don't know, I cracked the rim on my car, but the next day, I noticed that you guys, as soon as there was holes, the next day, they were all filled in, so. Ah, yeah, I wasn't going fast.
Slow down.
Listen up, chief.
We also have to hold these contractors to a hundred standing. If you look at Inkster Road from Ford Road to at least Warren, where, or Joy Road, where, where Dearborn Heights ends, that was done just maybe, what, five years ago? It is broken up, it's horrible, it's delaminated, big, big potholes on Inkster Road. And it's, and it's only five years old. I mean, it's not, it's not holding up, it's either, as far as I'm concerned, asphalt should not even be allowed in a state of Michigan. You know, if, if the substrate isn't done right, then the top layer is not going to work either. So that's my opinion, for whatever it were.
Step up to the podium. Identify yourself.
Excuse me. I'm Alina. I live in, on Cabree Lane. To comment on that, is there something we can do? Like, can we go to the county?
Write letters.
There's, there's actually a 1-800, I think it's 800 or 888, Road Cruise, which is, goes directly to Wayne County to their DPW, and they'll assign a work order number. So you can find that, actually, if you just look up Wayne County Road reporting, it takes you right to the site.
I believe she's trying to more of a complaint of getting it fixed.
For the city?
So it would be like sending an email.
No joke.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what that number's for.
Call County Executive's Office, email them, parade them with emails and text messages and whatever, because ultimately, you know, he's the captain of the ship there. Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
He listened when we bombarded him on the golf course. And I'm saying that I think it will work again. He's up for reelection this year, let's let him know he needs to fix that road if he wants our vote.
Now, they don't have, like, they don't have meetings like we do?
We do.
Well, here's the thing, because when we were going through the transaction as it related to the golf course, and there's a Wayne County Board of Commission, what I found was he never attends any of those meetings. And I, I went to six or seven of them in a row as we were conducting business. He, he sends representatives, but he, like, I'm here at all the council meetings, he doesn't come to the meetings. It's very hard to gain access to him. I know I'll probably get a call and comment, but that's the truth. I think as residents, and if you get enough comments, I think his office is going to say, "Something's going on over here," because we're getting all, like I said, I was, I'm tempted to put a sign up in the back of my house, and it'll say, "Get the road fixed, contact Evans," and, and real quickly, because it's just not getting done. And I'm not going to tell you where we are on the list because I don't want to depress everybody. But we've been following that as to where we are in the list. We did get, for a while there, we were over 100.
Yeah.
Now, that's gotten reduced, but I don't, I don't think they have enough money. And compounding all this, not to make this thing overly complicated, is the fact that the state legislature never really funded a road repair program. And so the money doesn't really start coming in until like after 2020, and these roads are just terrible. In fact, Mr. Zimmer and I had a discussion because I was driving on Michigan Avenue, and I wanted to get on the Telegraph, and I'm in the right-hand lane, and I took three hard smacks with my front end of my car. And Michigan Avenue's in bad shape, just around driving all over, but stay away out of that right-hand lane. I'm now wait until I'm just around Telegraph and put my turn signal on and hope somebody lets me in because there are three huge monster holes.
And the thing is, at night, you cannot see them. And when I, when I reported that to my dad, I told him, like, you know, hey, I just hit a pothole, I ruined my rim.
Yep.
And he's like, "Well, you need to slow down." No, you cannot see them at night. So I think as residents, we should go out and we should reach out to them because this is very important. Good, thank you. So good.
Another one to watch out for is on Telegraph near-
Carwild, Dearborn.
That one too.
That, that, I mean, we're now, yeah, we're, we're becoming like these road hazards, but we shouldn't have to deal with this. Somebody needs to put the thing in. Mr. Zimmer's been on top of it, we're trying to keep, but these state and these county roads are a problem.
Let me tell you, apparently, these tires are not cheap.
No.
Let's go out, let's talk to them.
Your dad, Dave Abdullah, you okay?
It doesn't matter, money does not grow off trees.
All right. You taught her well, you taught her well. Good job.
Identify yourself.
My daughter, Dave, Alalane, his brother, her uncle, you know, that kind of thing. But anyways, just to add on, who's responsible for that construction that went on in Beach Daily, and what exactly are they doing?
Water mains.
We, we, and in fact, we're going to have two other projects going on next year. There were so many water main breaks, and in fact, it was really tragic, and I'm not going to talk about specifics, but we had further north by Warren Road and Beach Daily, I think it was two years ago, we actually had a motorcyclist who hit a pothole because what was happening is with the water main breaks, it was having also an effect on both the condition of the road and water main. So we put, we did from Warren Avenue to Haas last year, and now we're going from Haas to Ford Road. We will be doing other water main, and, because some of these pipes are, I don't know how old they are, 60, 70, 80 years.
There's a lot of water in the, if there's a lot of water in the ground, you're going to get potholes. But the reason I'm asking is because every day I drop off my daughter at Riverside, on my way, I hit Beach Daily, and I notice, it seems like every week, more and more potholes are coming up. And, and, and it's probably, A, with water in the ground, but more importantly, most of the potholes, I'll tell you from my experience, have started when the construction started. And all those big trucks and trailers and tractors and whatever's going on over there, with all that weight and that whole section of all kinds of cement being moved around, that's probably why we're getting a lot more potholes now, because it, all of a sudden, when those water main break, construction crews got out, got out there, all of a sudden, the right two lanes are, like, I'm driving in the center lane now, just to avoid those, those potholes.
Well, I, I'll tell you, to get home, I don't come south. I go north, and even though it's out of my way, because as you pointed out, there may not be a pothole today, but tomorrow there'll be one. And I think I canvass where they are, and you get surprised.
But wouldn't the water main, well, I'm sorry to cut you off, but wouldn't the water company that's doing all this construction be responsible for patching as holes come around?
No.
They're not, they're not into patching, they're putting in the new water line, although, Mr. Brooks, do you have any comment relative?
We can take a look at them and see.
Is there increase?
We have videos of the road before construction, and we can compare it to see if they caused any further damage.
I know. You know, that's just like when they, where they repaired, where Great Lakes Water Authority was doing Ford Road and Telegraph area there, and they had Telegraph blocked off, the entrance to westbound Ford Road was blocked off for the longest time. And then they, they repaired that little section there, and I, and there's a huge pothole just south of there in that same lane, and I'm saying, they were here for the longest time. Why didn't they fix that then? But you know what they say when I call them? It's not, wasn't in their budget to fix that pothole. All they were budgeted for was the work that they were doing, and that's it.
The one real positive thing is, because that new water line's going on, when the road actually gets repaved and fixed, we now won't have to, a year from now, tear up part of the road to fix a water main and those things. So we're actually doing it how it should be done, where the water line is improved and taken care of. Although the water line is not under the road, it's actually on the grassy part. And, and there had, there's been a couple sections where they had to take out part of the access point into some of those side streets, and I know they're going to repave those. So, but, once again, the key is, and I'm, I'm constantly calling the county to get them out there to patch that thing, and they were out a couple days ago patching again, but that's the key, so we don't, those things don't get worse. But overall, that street needs to be redone, north and south.
They got to close more lanes then, then it creates another problem.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, do you know the phone number offhand?
For me?
Do you know the phone number offhand for residents to call to complain?
No, I don't have.
We, you know, we-
They have an online reporting, you can report the pothole online.
But that's to fix potholes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct. We, we sent letters to the County Executive-
Yep.
-when we wanted to do or not to do with, with the golf course. That's the same format that we should use. Send an email, send registered mail, whatever you, however you want to do it, just send him and tell him how upset we are with the road situation. And like the mayor said, it's election here, and the squeaky wheel will get the grease up.
Go ahead.
Evening. I didn't expect to be back this soon, but I was lonesome for you.
Oh.
You're making great progress, keep up the good work. I have a couple comments to make on the marijuana issue. And the first one is that there is an FDA-approved infrastructure in place to take care of the needs of the same patient who is presumed to be a patient for the so-called medical Medical marijuana is a misnomer. Anything that carries the jurisdiction, the privilege of the word "medical" has to go through a series of investigational steps, which designate a product or a food product or a pharmaceutical chemical to be consumed by human beings. And those steps ultimately conclude in a reasonable result. They have, the, the, the chemical has to be effective, and it has to be safe. You all know that medical marijuana is very effective to kill people. Is it safe? Questionably. Is a street marijuana safe? That's what you're dealing with under the false title of medical marijuana. Now, with regard to the number of people that have come here to voice their opinion tonight, my findings and my opinion is that they are not here, not because they didn't know about it, but because they believe that this issue was gone and away from this community entirely. So you've got, you've got a lot of work ahead of you to generate a following, to come in and give you their opinions. As goes statistics, Wayne County has just under 35,000 patients who depend on medical marijuana, quote unquote. Eighty percent of those patients are patients who suffer severe pain. And another 20% of the patients are patients who suffer severe muscle irregularities. So you're talking about 99% of the patients in some status of pain that they cannot handle. What they should be guided to is the new specialty, essentially a relative, a new specialty in the medical community, and that specialty is pain management. That can be entirely helpful to those people who are depending on, or who will depend on medical marijuana. When you look at the number, 35,000 in Wayne County depending on the so-called medical marijuana, and we have 67,000 people in this community, how many citizens are we going to serve in that class of, of need? So put the burden on your shoulder to figure out whether there is a genuine need for this kind of facility in Dearborn Heights. That's all, incidentally, those statistics come from the, the Licensing Regulation Authority dated 2016 December. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Nice seeing you again, Mr. Congressman.
Couldn't stay away, huh?
I'm sorry.
Just could not stay away from us, could you?
My rates are kind of high these days, so I got to be careful.
Madam Chairman, I, I have a phone number for Warren Evans, Warren Evans, 224-0286. Once again, 224-0286. Or you can go on the county website, yeah, it's area code 313.
Right.
And use that via email to get the message, but contact him directly.
Go ahead, please.
Debraun England, Sober Lane. I, I do want to speak to the fact, nobody kind of acknowledged when Councilman Constance said, "You guys did address this issue." This is an opt-in, not an opt-out issue. The cities had the choice to opt in to having these facilities in there, you did not have to opt out. By opting out, all you had to do was do nothing by December 15th. So we actually did do something about that. So it's not that it wasn't addressed, it was actually addressed. And we had a couple study sessions. Senator Kenezak had a meeting about it. I mean, I don't know how many more meetings that we need to have, I guess, because we have new people on the council, that, that's perfectly fine. You'll see attached to that, that great ordinance that was proposed by the lawyers for the medical marijuana facilities, that there's 50 whole cities in the, in the state of Michigan that have opted in. You want to know how many cities there are in the state of Michigan? 1,772. Okay? That leaves a whole lot out there that have not opted in to do that. Also, you asked, "How do we know how many medical marijuana cards have been issued in the city of Dearborn Heights for actual resident city of Dearborn Heights?" You can call Lara, I've called Lara, which is the governing body over the medical marijuana facilities, and talked with people in that particular office and asked specifically, "How many licenses are issued for the city of Dearborn Heights?" I don't know, is the answer. They do not keep that record. Specifically to our city, they do not keep records. It's only, like, former Councilman Kuzinski said, it's only for countywide do they actually keep records. They do not keep records based upon city.
You're talking about caregivers, correct?
No, I'm talking about people that have been issuing medical marijuana cards to actually use-
Oh, the cards, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yep. And also, in regards to why people don't show up, there's at least myself and one other person that are here today that can attest to the fact that when you speak out against having medical marijuana in your city, the kind of backlash that you get, I've been threatened, I've had all kinds of things threatened against me, that is why you may not get people speaking out against it. They may not come to public. Now, I don't care. You can say, obviously, you can say whatever you want to me, you can threaten me all you want because the police, I know, will respond to that. But a lot of people don't have that backing. They don't have a family that will stand and say, "I guarantee, you go, you go fight that." A lot of people just can't do that or won't do that because they're afraid. So you may not get those people coming here and talking about it because they're afraid based upon backlash.
They do send letters and stuff, though, and sometimes just don't sign them. You know, we get unsigned letters and-
Yes.
Or email, or emails.
Right, yeah, we do get some kind of communication from them.
There's a lot of backlash, trust me, a lot, when you speak out against it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of discussion, there was a group or groups that were going door-to-door placing, place cards on people's doorknob. And there were meetings and, you know, websites. This is a well-funded assault to bring medical marijuana to Dearborn Heights to allow dispensaries. Whether or not you can use medical marijuana, that's decided at the state level.
But if you look at, big marijuana, who has, who's got the money that's passing out all these flyers and stuff like that, is the same as big tobacco. You see what's happened to the tobacco industry, that, that's going to be this industry in 15, 20 years.
Interesting.
I mean, I don't think that we want to be part of that. And it's still federally illegal. And based upon Jeff Sessions, who has now, you know, done away with the coal amendment, if you all want to research that, they can, you know, he's moving towards prosecuting marijuana dealers.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, yes?
That's questions for Gary, you know, regarding this subject and other subjects.
That's questions for Gary, you know, regarding this subject and other subjects, is it legal, or what are the boundaries for having study sessions or official council meetings off-site, like at local high schools, or things like that?
I think we would be able to do it, but we have to end up following along with the Open Meetings Act in terms of the posting well in advance, if it's not a normal site on city property. I'm fairly certain.
Like town hall meeting?
Yes, exactly.
Announce a town hall meeting?
Yeah.
City Council Town Hall Meeting.
Any further questions or discussion?
We have one more.
Suzanne, go ahead, please.
I just want to attest with Debbie that I was one of the people that was attacked and threatened. In fact, I even had some physical, something done. I can't prove who did it, but it just happened during that time when there was a very, very livid discussion on Facebook about it. And I, I can say that the people that are for it are very, very, to put it nicely, pushy. And like I said, we've, both her and I have been threatened, and I don't care either, because I figure I'm 67 years old, how much many more years do I have? Okay, you want to threaten me, fine, but that's okay, I've taken care of that business. But it, it's true, they, they are very pushy, and then if you, on the south end, there's a Taco Bell, and there's one of those electronic signs, for several months, this sign went with the medical marijuana, you know, it's, it's this, it's that. Like I said, I don't have any problem with medical marijuana when it's used correctly. But personally, right now, I think these medical marijuana facilities that want to be set up in these small bedroom communities like Dearborn Heights, they're just trying to get their foot in the door in order when we, when recreational marijuana is passed, they'll be up and running. And you can read all about it in Colorado and the other states that have passed medical marijuana.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Move to adjourn.
There's somebody else?
Oh, sorry.
Hello again, I'm Alina. I just have a few bully points that I marked down while I was sitting. I grew up around it in high school, I don't want to be around it, it smells. I'm all about holistic approaches, I'm going into the medical field, I'm pursuing a degree in, as a biology major, and I'm going into, I'm pursuing a physician assistant degree, I'm sorry. I think that people in our community will, and in any community, will abuse medical marijuana. I know people personally who have a medical marijuana card that don't need it. So, I wouldn't oppose it for medicinal purposes, but I do think that people have a card in our community that do not need it, and I personally do not want to be around it, and I don't want my children to be around it, I don't want my family to be around it, so I would like to disagree with this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, tonight I'd like to take, take the time to thank everyone for, oh.
Got one more.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you guys again for letting me speak. One thing I'd like to...
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Scott Lowry, I am CEO of Newly Cannabis Consulting, which has done consulting in many different municipalities, for many different types of these business models, and read many ordinances that have been passed and are moving forward. Just maybe a couple quick things I'd like to address is, is, you know, I've been in business all my life, and, and one of the things I've learned is to use science, in fact, as a basis for making decisions. Rather than hearsay and conjecture and, and opinion, obviously, the community's opinion matters, but what I haven't heard is, is the, the opinion of, of patients who, who do have difficulty getting access to it, and I know a lot of people grow, I mean, I hate to say it, I mean, whether they're licensed or not, marijuana's already all around, and a lot of, A, a lot of the tax revenue that could go into helping community infrastructure, and maybe repairing some of these roads, is being diverted into the black market, first of all, and second of all, we have a huge problem with the efficacy and purity of the product that is out on the streets. Lab testing is a, is a huge part in compliance, and, and I'd like to, to, you know, just put forth that, that this is part of the MMFLA's approach, is they want ISO 9001, good manufacturing processes type level of inventory and record-keeping, lab testing and quality assurance, which is something that, that people rarely talk about at these meetings. The quality of the medicine, microbial pathogens, you know, on the street, there's no testing, there's no, there's no, there's no third-party ability to, to recognize something that has powder emilde, or could possibly be harmful to an eight-year-old person who's taking an edible to relieve their, their arthritis symptoms, rheumatoid arthritis, et cetera, and, and they could be getting something that's potentially very harmful. So regu, I'm all about regulatory compliance, you know.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
If there is someone else, oh, Jim Lech.
State your name.
Jim Lech, Hastingson Street, resident for over 22 years here in the city of Dearborn Heights. I think whether you're for medical marijuana or against it, the product itself is not really the question that needs to be answered, it's on how it's going to impact the stakeholders of this community, period. I think we're making it too difficult to answer the question, because we're 12.5 square miles, we're not a large city area-wise, we're not a large city population-wise, and most importantly, we're not a large city when it comes to the finances of the city. So whether you're, you're in need as a caregiver, whether you want to open a facility, most, I equate it to the guy that lives in West Bloomfield who has a strip club on 8 Mile. He does not live in this community. He's reaping the benefits of having that facility, that business, in that community, but he's, he's giving nothing to that city, he's taking out of that community and impacting the community with problems that he does not have to concern himself with. So that is the question that needs to be answered, not whether it's helpful to the people that are seeking it, not whether or not it's harmful to the people that are seeking it, that's not the question, can we afford it? How is it going to impact our property values? Why are they so set on coming to this community to set it up? Are they going to West Bloomfield and coming to each and every council meeting saying, we want to open up a shop there? Is it because our median income level here is about $45,000, not $80,000 per capita, I mean, per household? I think that's the part that, if, you have to look at our local cities that are in distress, and we all kind of mention it, when things aren't looking too good, we mention the city of Detroit. These are the type of businesses or things that occurred there many, many years ago, promises of tax revenue, promises of helping the city financially, helping the community. None of that happened, because it was all selfishly involved.
Okay.
We have 57,000 people approximately in this city. How many of those 57,000 are in need of the medical marijuana? We don't have a hospital here, so if you're talking about healthcare, we don't have a hospital in the city limits of Dearborn Heights. However, we can go to Garden City, that's nearby. There was a medical marijuana setup, people say they're afraid to go to Detroit. There was one right near my neighborhood, granted, it wasn't in Dearborn Heights, but it was a stone's throw from Dearborn Heights, Warren and Braille, or not Braille, one of the streets over there. It didn't even survive. It's not that dangerous to take a step north off of Warren and go to that shop, because that's your neighborhood, regardless if the boundary lines differ. It's still your neighborhood, and people did not go there, it didn't survive. So again, I don't, it's not about whether you want to use it, it's not about if you approve the use of it or disapprove the use of it. How are we going to be able to handle the disadvantages associated with having it here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Good night.